One minute to air. We are now streaming. All right, let's do it. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. It's good to see everybody here. We'll call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. And if you will, join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. I'll now pass over to Councilmember Freeman for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. It's our practice to stand to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the robe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Mayor Protem Middleton.
I'm here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Caballero.
Here.
Councilmember Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Present.
Councilmember Rist.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Tonight, we have two ceremonial items. And I'll read the first one. If we have any representatives for NCSSN, please join me over at the mic. All right. Alicia Stokely? All right, not here yet. All right. So what I'll do is I'll hold on. All right. Mayor Protem, if you want to just come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to my honorable colleagues, everyone in the chamber tonight and whatever platform you're looking at, watching us on tonight. Good evening. I have the great pleasure of reading a proclamation for Juneteenth week here in Durham, an official holiday for us here in the city of Durham. And I'm going to ask if Sister Aya Shabu is here, if she would come up. Proclamation. Whereas Durham is a city that takes pride in its rich history and rightfully acknowledges and celebrates the contributions and achievements of its residents. And whereas the city of Durham owes much to the indigenous and African ancestors whose bones, blood, sweat, and tears were fertilizer to tobacco fields and mortar to bricks. Accordingly, the city of Durham creates opportunities to tell those stories as well. And whereas the proclamation of emancipation, signed by President Abraham Lincoln in 1863, was, in Saint Paulie Murray's words, "a historical and documentary recognition of an accomplished fact." And whereas the presenting institutions of Be Connected Durham and Beyond Bragtown Community Association, Bump the Triangle, Carolina King of Comedy comedian D wish, Merrick Moore Community Development Corporation, Soul Sanctuary, True Heart Consulting, The Magic of African Rhythm, Village of Wisdom, Inc., West End Lion Park Legacy Project LLC, and Whistle Stop Tours are unified by their pride and organize Juneteenth events enjoy a celebration of human resistance and resilience. Now, therefore, I, Leonardo Williams, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the week of June 15, 2024, as Juneteenth week unified by our pride in Durham, and hereby urge residents to take note of this observance. Witness my hand and the corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, this the 10th day of June 2024. Leonardo Williams, Mayor.
Thank you. That was absolutely beautiful. Thank you. It's important to be recognized. Juneteenth is such an important holiday. It's such an important celebration, but we know that the struggle continues. I came here to Durham in 2003. I came here, like many others, for so many things, right? It's the city of medicine. It's the city of startups and innovation. It's the city, well, at one point, it was the L capital of the South, lesbian capital of the South, if y'all didn't get that. So people come here for all kinds of reasons, but those places and the reasons why we came sometimes can be endangered, and our black communities are in danger. Gentrification is just another face of urban renewal, which we know has done to black communities all over this country. And so events like Juneteenth are important because they help us remember who we are, help us retain and preserve those neighborhoods and that history. You know, Baba Chuck Davis invited me here as an artist, and many of us know Baba Chuck's mantra of peace, love, and respect for everyone. We can't celebrate Juneteenth without thinking about our brothers and sisters in Palestine. We can't stop thinking about the, right, the displacement and the dispossession of their land. And that's happening right here in Durham, dispossession of land. And so celebrations like Juneteenth is an opportunity where artists use their talent to galvanize community. And they have to be funded. Many of those artists can't even afford to stay in Durham. And so the Durham Cultural Advisory Board, D C A B, Durham Cultural Advisory Board, has asked for $400,000 in our budget. We've got $300,000, thank you very much. We need the rest. We need all of it. We need the other $100,000. So please come out. This is a call to action. Come out to Juneteenth. We have a whole week of celebrations, June 15 through the 22nd. And they're in black neighborhoods. It's important, black neighborhoods, to help preserve those stories and learn that history. We all have to decolonize our own individual practices. Decolonization starts at home. So come and learn and listen, become a steward of those neighborhoods by sharing those stories. And on June 15, Bragtown, the oldest African-American neighborhood in Durham, where enslaved from Staggville came and settled that land, they need your help. They're looking for volunteers for their event. So please come out to all of the events, but definitely show your love, show your support, show your commitment to freedom right now, today in 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'll now. Thank you. Javier, I guess you're going to win. Let's see. We'll see. All right. Announcements by council.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thanks so much for being here. I love, I love, I love to see a crowded room. And for those of you watching online, thank you also for tuning in. I'm going to be very brief today. Y'all have heard one thing that I was hoping to recognize, which is that it is now the month for Juneteenth celebrations, and there is a really awesome lineup of different neighborhoods. So y'all just heard about those, but I would encourage you to check out. There's one, I think, four during that week between the 15th and the 20th about. All worth checking out. The other thing that I wanted to say is that it is the beginning of June, which also kicks off Pride Month, and so a lot of heavy things going on in Durham, but I think we also get to take a minute to celebrate all of the awesomeness that is here. So whether you are out and proud and you are confident in your identity, or you are still closeted or afraid, or still figuring it out, I respect everyone's journey, and I'm so happy to be in a city that identifies as our tourism group just said, as a queer. They said Raleigh is gay, Durham is queer, and no, we will not elaborate. And I thought that was pretty silly and lovely and also accurate. So I'm glad to be here tonight. Thank you all for joining us. And I think part of the resistance is also celebrating when it's time to celebrate. So happy Pride, happy Juneteenth. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Happy Pride. I just wanted to say this weekend was an amazing weekend in Durham. On Saturday night, we had so many things happening. It's one of the reasons I think we all love this city. Downtown was vibrating with people all in the street, lots of good music. I want to shout out Silvaneso's two-day concert, which was a great experience and a kind of pretty epic way for Durham to kick off Pride. Also, I just want to shout out all the DPS graduates for this month. Next week, many 17- and 18-year-olds will be crossing the stage, including my eldest, and I think Mayor Williams also has a senior, and Councilmember Freeman, I think her oldest also just recently graduated. So I want to shout out all those kids who will be walking across the stage on this milestone. This is the last group of kids who started high school during the COVID lockdown. So they've had an interesting high school experience. And I also want to talk a little bit about education funding very quickly. My kids entered DPS kind of at the beginning of when Republicans took over our state, and the funding around education and the lack of funding around education this generation has experienced is pretty sad and terrifying. I am a huge advocate of public schools because I believe everyone should go to school together. It's a lot harder to other somebody if you go to school with them. It's a lot harder to other somebody based on race, class, gender identity, if you grow up together. It makes it harder to be biased and have prejudices if you go to school with lots of different kids. And so that is why I'm a huge advocate for public schools. And watching what has been happening in our state, which is currently happening with the funding of vouchers for private education, is disheartening and really ruining North Carolina and what we stand for. I moved to North Carolina as an immigrant because of its public school education. I went through Public Hay, fourth grade through university. And we were a beacon in the South around public education. All schools, including our university system, were models in the South and across the United States, and that has been decimated. And that is going to cost us. It's going to cost our kids and the futures that they have. And so for everyone who managed to keep their kids in DPS, who are holding on and really championing our public schools, including our educators, thank you so much because it's a hard time in those buildings right now. So again, thanks to all the, thank you to every educator who helped my kid cross this, you know, huge milestone. And hopefully, we will see a different day in North Carolina when our schools are actually fully funded. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Rist.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Protem, Madam City Manager, colleagues, staff, citizens of Durham. Good to see you all. I want to first of all echo my colleagues' comments, wish everyone a happy start to Pride Month. I just got back today on the Triangle Transit Bus from a day-long meeting in Chapel Hill to attend the NC Vision Zero Leadership Institute. As you may know, Durham is one of a growing number of communities nationwide that has pledged to reduce deaths on our roads to zero. And I think we actually have an item on our agenda tonight, Mr. Mayor, I think, a consent agenda, to change the ordinance we have in Durham and actually to update that and proclaim that we want to now reduce our deaths on the roads for either bikers, pedestrians, or cars to zero by 2045. It's an important moment. Durham's the leading city in this movement. We just hired an awesome Vision Zero coordinator at the end of last year, Lauren Grove, and we are ready to move boldly forward on this agenda to make sure that all of our road users, again, pedestrians, bikers, and drivers are free from fear on our roads. So I look forward to working with you together to make Vision Zero a reality in Durham. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening again, honorable colleagues, everyone in the room. Let me add my well wishes as well and echo best wishes for a successful start to Pride Month, to all of our residents and citizens who are part of the LGBTQIA+ community, and to their friends, allies, and family members as well. Mr. Mayor, I need to ask for an excused absence for this Thursday's work session. This Thursday and Friday, as the new president of the North Carolina League of Municipalities, I'll be hosting my first Board of Directors meeting in Durham. So it's pretty cool that folk from all over the state, electors from all over the states will convene here in Durham as my first board meeting under the guise of the presidency. Mr. Mayor, you'll be there to greet them briefly on Thursday, then I know you've got to get back here. We're going to show off Durham a little bit. I'm going to host them at a Durham Bulls game that night and then show them some more of the city on Friday. So if you see some folk walking around just kind of looking up in the sky, please make sure you say hi to them. They're members of our Board of Directors of the North Carolina League of Municipalities. So I'll be asking for that excused absence for this Thursday's board meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, colleagues.
All right. Is there a motion to prove his absence? It's been moved and prob, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk? Oh, okay. You had the out-of-water look. All right. All in favor? I'm sorry. If you can please open the vote. All opposed? I'm sorry. We're in an out-of-the-work session. Please open the vote.
The motion's unanimous.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, colleagues.
All right. Looking forward to having the Board of Directors here. I do serve on the Board of Directors, but I am going to be here in the meeting to conduct us through. But I'm excited to have other mayors and elected officials across the state here in Durham and able to show off our city. I had an amazing time this weekend at the 32nd Annual El Centro Gala, where they celebrate the amazing work that's happening over there. It's a beautiful event where just folks from all over the community comes together and just, you know, just celebrate a great cause and raise funds to continue to work for our Latino and Latina, Latinx brothers and sisters. It was a great, great, great time. Also, had a had a gosh, I lost my thought. But it was about my son, who just graduated. So again, congratulations to Councilmember Freeman's little one and all of the other students across the city and the county that are graduating. My son will be headed over to Duke, so I'm lucky. I get to keep him home, keep him close, but far, just a little bit away. But also, happy Pride Month. See, Mayor Protem, I saw when he was walking in, I was like, okay, brownie points for the tie. I see you. So happy Pride Month. Really excited about, you know, just being in a city that honors Pride Month, and I'm sure that we're going to be really intentional. And I know some folks like to get a little crazy when we celebrate certain causes, but please be warned. If any of you all out there listening want to try and strike in a crazy way toward our communities, do know, we will make sure you're dealt with. We're going to celebrate. We're going to have fun in this city, and we're going to honor the space. But I know that, you know, there are some bad actors out there, so just be forewarned. Don't try it. We're going to celebrate in Durham. Also, same, in the same vein, it's Juneteenth coming up, and there are, as Councilmember Cook stated, there are so many events going on. And just, I'm notorious for trying to go to every last one of them, and I probably will make, if I'm in town, I'm going to be there. So I look forward to partying with you, partying with you and dancing and just having a great time, celebrating these events. And yeah, I'm excited about it. Lastly, I cannot whenever I get an opportunity to speak on this, I am, and I'm going to continue as long as I can. But there is something pretty severe. As a matter of fact, crisis level that's happening in our community. Our youth are engaged in gun violence more than we, who are living in this time, have seen in a long time. And I do not understand how we are not, you know, throwing the flag up and saying, you know, as a community, what we're going to do, as a governing body, what we're going to do, as other governing bodies, what we're going to do. I do not understand why we have not stopped, pressed pause, and really focused on this. But we are seeing gun violence like we did in the mid-'90s. And there are a lot of important things that we need to advocate for. But when it comes to someone's life being taken or someone losing their life, I'm sorry, that is my top priority. That is my number-one priority. And it just so happens to be young black men. And it just so happens to be in very, in very much the same neighborhoods. And it just so happens to be conveniently forgotten about or ignored by many, many people, you know? So I'm going to speak that truth, that we are, we're in a youth crisis in this city. Every single day, you turn on the news, and there is another story about gun violence. There is another young black male who's killed another young black male. And that is not a story that you just conveniently graze over. So I'm going to make sure it is a speed bump from hell. In your normal routine, you will hear about it. And I hope that when I actually operationalize some of these that I'll be doing, that you'll join me, the same way you put your energy into everything else. I gave you that silence to let it resonate. Now, with that being said, let's get to the business. All right. Well, now, look at our priority items by the manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the Durham City Council. I have a few priority items for you this evening. First, Agenda Item Number 21, which is a Contract Amendment Number Two for Durham Workforce Development Board, Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, NC Works Career Center Operations with Eckert Youth Alternatives, Inc. The additional information requested during the May 23, 2024 City Council Work Session has been attached. Agenda Item Number 25, Resolution Accepting the Build It Forward Grant from the United States Tennis Association Southern for the repair of tennis courts at Southern Boundaries Park. This item was referred back to Parks and Recreation Department. Agenda Item Number 26, 2024 First Quarter Crime Report. The additional information requested during the May 23, 2024 City Council Work Session has been attached. Agenda Item Number 27, Update to the Vision Zero Resolution. The additional information requested during the May 23, 2024 City Council Work Session has been attached. And finally, additional information was requested during the May 20, 2024 Public Hearing on Agenda Item Number 41, Consolidated Annexation, Virgil Road Assemblage. Staff's Response is attached under Priority Items by the City Manager, City Attorney, and City Clerk. That is all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Williams. It's good to see you. Mayor Protem Middleton, members of the council. The City Attorney's Office has no priority items tonight.
Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome. The City Clerk's Office has no priority items this evening.
Thank you. And since we're on you, colleagues, if you will, take a look at the ballots for Thursday. It's a bit more extensive than normal. So put a little more extra time on that if you need to. All right. One day, I'm going to have these two meetings figured out. All right. I'll now read the consent agenda. Number one, Durham Board of Adjustments Appointment. Number two, Durham Workers' Rights Commission Appointment. Number three, Durham Planning Commission. Number four, Mayor's Council for Women. Number five, Citizens Advisory Committee. Number six, Durham Sports Commission. Seven, Request to Admon the Fiscal 2023-2024 Budget and Other Capital Project Ordinances. Number eight, Tri-Party Agreement with the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency and the North Carolina Home Builders Association for the Construction Training Partnership. Number eight. Number nine, Grant Agreement with Development Ventures Incorporated for the Dillon Street Apartments. Number 10, Grant Agreement with Development Ventures Incorporated for Forever Home Durham Hope. Hope for, I'm sorry, Hope Six Preservation Project. Number 11, Grant Agreement with Development Ventures Incorporated for Fayette Place in Forest Hills Heights Redevelopment. Number 12, General Obligation Bond Referendum. It's been pulled. Pull number 12. I'm right in there. Number 12. Just make sure these are presentations. I'm going to pull number nine, too. Regina Mees, no, that's Okay. So I'd still pull it right. Let me sound up. Yeah. And number nine has been pulled. Number nine, number 12. These are all Number 13, Insurance Plan Fiscal Year '25 to '27. Number 14, 2024 North Carolina Summer Fire Camp Program Grant Project Ordinance. Number 15, Contract with Masca Design Incorporated for the Corcoran Street Garage Banner, Banners Restoration Project. Number 16, First Amendment Contract to Create Public Art for South Ellerby Restoration Project Using CIP Public Art Funds. Number 17, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Coronavirus State Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, CSL F R F Funds, Sub-Award Agreement between City of Durham, North Carolina, and St. Joseph's Historic Foundation Incorporated. Number 18, Contract with Cornerstone On Demand Incorporated for Software to Automate the Employee Performance Evaluation Program. Number 19, American Rescue Plan Act for ARPA Bridging Business Opportunity and Equity Project. Number 20, Agreement to Fund Made in Durham Education to Career Initiatives. Number 21, Contract Amendment Number Two for Durham Workforce Development Board, Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, NC Works Career Center Operations with Eckert Youth Alternatives Incorporated. Number 22, Inner Local Agreement between the City of Durham Central Pines Regional Council and Durham County Regarding Cost Sharing for the Roxboro Rail Trail Master Plan. Number 23, Resolution Accepting the 2024 Tennis Venue Services Grant from the United States Tennis Association for the Repair of Tennis Courts at Southern Boundaries Park. Number 24, Resolution Accepting the Grant Program, I'm sorry, the Grant from the United States Tennis Association, North Carolina, for the repair of tennis courts at Southern Boundaries Park. Number 25, Resolution Accepting the Build It Forward Grant from the United States Tennis Association Southern for the Repair of Tennis Courts at Southern Boundaries Park. Okay, gotcha. Number 26, 2024 First Quarter Crime Report. Number 27, Update to the Vision Zero Number 27, Update to the Vision Zero Resolution. Number 28, Construction of a New Traffic Signal at US 501 North Roxboro Street and Monk Road. Number 29, Amendment One to the Professional Services Contract with Kimley Horn and Associates Incorporated for the West End Water and Sewer Rehabilitation Project. Number 30, Amendment to the Service Contract with Waterworks Services Incorporated for Residential Backflow Prevention, Assembly Testing, and Repair. Number 31, Amendment to the Service Contract with AGME Services of Durham Incorporated for Residential Backflow Prevention, Assembly Testing, and Repair. Number 32, Professional Services Contract with Critex Engineering Group, PC, for the Miscellaneous Waterline Replacement Phase Two Project. Public hearings, number 37, Public Hearing for the City Manager's Proposed Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Budget and Fiscal Year 2025-2030 Capital Improvement Project, CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, CIP. And 38, Proposed City of Durham Fire Department Permit and Inspection Fee Increase for Fiscal Year 2024-2025. Should we, yeah. Well, I'll move the consent first. I'll now entertain a motion to...
Would you mind just saying one more time which items were pulled before we make a motion for the consent agenda?
Nine, 12, and 25.
Thank you.
And 25 was referred back.
Refer back, great. I'll make that motion at this time?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
The consent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right. So that we are, so that the budget will be the last item, and we only have two public hearings, colleagues. I'm going to move 38 before, item 37 before, item 38 before item 37. And we will now move to pulled items. All right, number nine was pulled. Let me make sure I got my... Yeah, let's do that. Let's change it. All right. I know, Madam Clerk, you have the out-of-order look. It is out of order, but I'm going to change it tonight so we can end on the budget. Because that's going to be, that's going to take the most time. We have really short items before, so I'm not going to have a resident wait all night. So number nine was pulled by Ms. Regina Mays. Welcome, thanks for coming. You have three minutes. You don't need to state your address, just state your name for the record.
Regina Mays, Durham resident. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, all presiding members. I wanted to kind of speak to nine through 11, but I know I had to pick one specifically. So it's centered around any contracts that will be held between DVI and community development. I'm not against money coming in. I know we need money. I know we need housing, and it needs to be affordable. But what I am against is the accountability and what happens once the money change hands. So myself being a resident under a property that is in partnership with a private developer in DVI, I not only live some of the same horrors that other residents live. Thank you for acknowledging the gun violence this evening, but I will speak more to the interchange of management that we have constantly had, what residents face when they are putting in maintenance requests and different things of that nature. And then we show up to speak at meetings that is held by the Housing Authority, and we are basically told that we can only acknowledge certain things because we are under private development. When we reach out to those owners of the properties, most of them are not in this area. So we do not get any type of response. And if we do get any type of response, it is very vague and no follow-through. I even myself have to work with my developer's head office being out of Boston, my regional office being out of Maryland. I have had representatives come to me personally on my porch and speak with me. But I would clearly say it is very apparent, they don't understand the culture of Durham when it comes to housing. It is not like in Maryland or Boston or anywhere else. We don't even have rules that govern and protect residents as those places do. So from everything, from evictions being filed on residents that do not even be completely fulfilled because something as simple as somebody's recertification not being completed on the DHA side. Those are what residents face multiple times. I have one resident in Willard Street Apartments. And please, Mayor Pro Tem, I know, it was a wonderful development. It was, it's kind of a brainchild of what Durham is trying to go. But those residents, however, are suffering. I hope that you all take the time to go and talk to the residents and find out why managers quit and leave 30 days or less after being in position. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Could you give her contact information? All right. Colleagues, colleagues, I do need to entertain a motion to receive item number nine.
Mr. Mayor, I offer a motion to authorize the City Manager to execute a grant agreement with Development Ventures, Inc. for the Dillard Street Apartments in an amount not to exceed $3 million.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. And I will say, I want to make sure that we all know that the residents have heard. I'll make sure I reach out with staff, getting that information now. All right, Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
Motion passes seven-zero.
All right, the next item is number 12. Yeah, okay. Danielle Doeman, Doeman, can you hear me?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, there you go. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Is this the appropriate time to speak on the bonds and the consent agenda?
Yes, yes, this is your three minutes. Welcome.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Danielle Doeman, I'm a Durham resident and part of Walltown Community Association. Speaking tonight, just on the planned $85 million bond for parks. I believe that's to be used for improvements in Long Meadow and East Durham Parks. You all may remember that East Durham Park is one of the five parks deeply affected by lead and other serious contamination. And so it proposed two things. One, that we seriously consider any improvements that would disrupt or move any sort of land or soil until the threat can be remediated so as not to make it worse or, you know, put particles into the air and cause more serious pollution for residents living near the parks and people using the parks. The other thing is I would really encourage us to think more broadly about how we're using these bonds, particularly to, instead of routine expected maintenance, to think about, you know, using it for helping to remediate the contamination that we know is in the five parks. Although we don't know the full scope of the contamination at this time, we know very well the contamination that is within the boundaries of these parks. And I would like to see this bond in particular expanded to include, if not in full, at least partial remediation of the contamination in these parks. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, I'll now entertain a motion to pass to... Oh, yeah, gotcha. So colleagues, I'll now entertain a motion to introduce a bond order authorizing the issuance of $85 million general obligation Parks and Recreation Bonds of the City of Durham, North Carolina.
They're moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk? Please open the vote. Thank you. Please close the vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And colleagues, I'll now entertain a motion to introduce a bond order authorizing the issuance of $115 million general obligation Streets and Sidewalks Bonds of the City of Durham, North Carolina.
They're moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
The motion passes seven-zero.
And I'll... And I'll, lastly, entertain a motion to adopt a resolution setting a public hearing on the bond orders for June 17th, 2024.
They're moved.
Second.
Moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
Motion passes seven-zero.
All right, we're moving along with that. 25 went back. All right. Thirty, thirty-eight, yeah. All right. Chief? Colleagues, we're now on number 38.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the City Council. My name is Bob Zoldis. I serve as the, as the City of Durham's Fire Chief. With me this evening is Assistant Chief Jody Morton, who serves as our city's Fire Marshal. This is a request for the Durham Fire Department to increase our permit and inspection fees for fiscal 2024-2025. The DFD, the Durham Fire Department, conducts state-mandated fire inspections at all occupancies within the city of Durham with the exception of one family and two family dwellings in accordance with Section 46-86 of the Durham City Code. The City of Durham began charging for fire inspections and permits in July of 1992 upon the adoption of the first mandated North Carolina State Fire Code. The last fire inspection fee increase was five years ago, that's 7/1/2019. The proposed fire inspection fee increase in this request will allow the DFD to operate closer to a cost recovery basis. The proposed fee increase will result in approximately a 20% increase to the current collection of fire inspection and permit fees, and this would result in an average increase of $21 for routine inspections. For fiscal year 2023-2024, anticipated collection from the fire inspection and permit fees are $935,736. With current staffing levels, we expect the, there to be an increase with this new fee of $187,000 with the modified fee schedule. That completes our presentation, and we're available for any questions.
All right, you've heard the report from staff. I'll now declare this public hearing open. Colleagues, no, this, this public hearing is now open. I do not have any sign-ups for this, so I will ask any colleagues, are there any questions, comments? All right, I'll now declare this public hearing closed. And...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. All right, colleagues, now, I'll entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the fire inspection and permit fees in Chapter Eight of the city's fee schedule.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
Motion passes seven-zero.
Thank you so much. All right, we are, all right, we're moving. I think Haverhill is going to win this bet. All right, colleagues, we're now on 37. Public hearing for the City Manager's Proposed Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Budget and Fiscal Year 2025-2030 Capital Improvement Plan, CIP. All right, at this time, we'll hear from staff.
All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. I'm J.J. Scott, Assistant Director for Budget and CIP in the Budget and Management Services Department. This agenda item is to conduct a public hearing to receive comments regarding the City Manager's Proposed Fiscal Year 2024-25 Budget and Fiscal Year 2025-2030 Capital Improvement Plan. All public hearing requirements have been fulfilled.
All right, we've heard the staff report. Colleagues, are there any questions before we move into it? All right, at this time, I will now declare the public hearing open. Yeah, I'll start online. Madam Clerk, I'm going to start online. And the first person I have is John Wagstaff. That's John. Okay. And one moment. Mr. Wagstaff, can you hear me?
I can.
All right, welcome. You are, you're speaking on number 37, the budget. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. I spoke at the last public budget hearing about the need to prioritize public safety pay and staffing in the budget. I now come before you again to echo the importance of increased pay for city employees, but tonight I speak solely as a taxpayer, one who you will soon be losing. $5,873.57, my total assessed property tax in 2023 for a 1,000-square-foot home and two vehicles. It costs burden amounting to three of my paychecks, a month and a half of work as a city employee, assuming no personal contributions from my 401K. My home value is less than the average home price in Durham. While a believer that police officers should live in the communities they serve, I regret that I will be buying a home outside of Durham. It would be irresponsible of me to start a family in a city where the basics are not covered. I applaud the city for some of its endeavors, funding reentry programs, public art, and the expansion of bike lanes. But frankly, none of that matters like the mayor covered tonight when people were getting shot in the streets, nor to anyone across economic lines who have to anxiously wait for their 911 call to be answered or an ambulance to be available, call out of work to either take their kid to school or remain at home through a school closure, wonder if their garbage is going to be collected, have to deal with their property being stolen, owing to be told by the police that they're not going to investigate it due to staffing, or can't enjoy parks like Long Meadow because it's controlled by drug dealers and litter with trash. Public safety is a ticking time bomb in this city, and there's still rhetoric from some counselors about re-appropriating officer positions that are vacant. Mind you, the officer-to-sys isn't ratio, but even a fully staffed department lags decades. Yes, I'm moving to one of those suburbs that everyone complains about, but I'm going to be taxed less, provided more, and not contributing financially to a city with mismatch priorities. Please reevaluate tax increase for this burden and your bonds to fund normal stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Seth, Seth Hurley. Next I have DeWone Langley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Manager, and members of the Durham City Council. I want to first start by having a moment of silence as we recently this evening had one of our citizens, Jantavia Day. one of our citizens, Javon, Jantavia Day. She was a twenty-one-year-old young lady who was shot on guest roads. She succumbed to her injury, so I just want to take a moment of silence for her and other gun violence victims in the city of Durham. Now I want to move on to a, uh, question that was raised to our police chief last week by Councilwoman Cook, and our police chief responded when asking how can we curtail the violence in our community. She said, "We recognize that our kids, if some of the most affected are not exposed to a world that shows them that they can be better and be in a better place than they currently are. They will turn around and potentially be our next victims or grow up to be offenders in our society." Again, I am coming before this council asking for an investment of twenty-five thousand dollars to support the impactful transformational work of the Charles Hamilton Houston Foundation, where we provide vital career exploration and development programming for boys and young men of color in Durham. This group faces significant challenges, including low academic proficiency, poor college and career readiness, high suspension and dropout rates, limited access to sustainable careers, and elevated involvement in gang violence and juvenile detention. We can change this. Our program aims to address these disparities through skill-focused mentoring, academic enrichment, and leadership development. Your investment will help us expand our reach, enhance our resources, and build long-term sustainability. Participants in our program gain skills, resources, and support necessary for academic success and career achievement. That is how you deter gun violence in this community, by giving our young people, particularly our boys and young men of color, a possibility in the future. Your funding will be transformative. Please make this investment.
Thank you. Next, I have Molly Flo. Molly, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, I can. Welcome, you have two minutes.
Thank you. I just want to express my appreciation to the council and the city staff for the transportation priorities in the proposed budget. I live between Duke and Gregson Streets and have watched the traffic be scary for years, and in the last few years, it's gotten much more frightening. And so I appreciate the priorities in the CIP and in the transportation requests, and I want to urge you all to, to approve those transportation priorities. Also appreciate your efforts on Vision Zero and the putting in importance on the streets and sidewalks in the upcoming bonds or the bond proposal. And then I want to just add that I would urge, urge all of you to do anything that you can to accelerate projects that make our streets safer for, for, not, not just for drivers, but especially for pedestrians, bikers, transit users. We really need our streets to be safer sooner. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I have Margaret Chapman.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can, welcome, you have ten minutes.
Thank you so much. I, I want to echo what Molly said, and thank you for the work you've done on trying to reduce accidents and fatalities on our roads. And again, echo what Molly said, that it's really important for this budget to work as quickly as possible to try to put in design solutions which will keep people safe on our streets, and in particular, I'm thinking about turning both Mangum and Roxborough back into two-way streets and Gregson and Duke into two-way streets. I live right next to Gregson, and I've seen three times in the last nine years how cars go into houses, which is really scary, and it makes it harder for people to feel safe, even in their homes because of the traffic design. So I want to thank you for the work that you've done for this, and I want to just push you to move as fast as possible. Thanks.
Thank you. Those are all of my online speakers. I'm going to repeat, if you are signing up online, you need to be online. If you're signing up in person, please be in person. If you do both, you're taking up a space for someone else. So I'd ask the public to please try your best to hold to whichever method. I know things happen, but we want to make sure we engage as many people as possible. All right, we'll now move to in-person. And I'll call up in, I'll call up a few at a time. Uh, the first person I have is... And I'm gonna ask that you say your name when you get to the podium, because it's really hard to read sometimes. Virginia Wurtman? Wurtman or Vertman? James Chavis? Sarita Hill? And... Ali Corasani. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Virginia, and I'm here tonight as a resident of Durham to speak on behalf of the solid waste workers and the fact that they are not currently being served well enough with the pay program that is being implemented in this budget. It does not represent the cost of living in Durham. Nineteen dollars an hour is not going to keep you housed in Durham. That is way more than people will be able to afford on a percentage of childcare, on a percentage of food, on a percentage of rent. Let's be honest here, rent is mostly what it's going to. Solid waste workers are an incredibly precious public health role. They work in physically strenuous conditions, they operate heavy machinery. Everything they do contributes to the well-being and safety and health of our city. But within the general step plan, they represent a huge portion of the people that are within the general step plan, but they only represent thirty percent of the raise. Where's, why are they not being funded appropriately? Why are they not being given enough money to survive, which would be, again, in Durham, twenty-seven dollars an hour? Twenty-seven dollars an hour across the board for everyone would be a survivable wage, and if we can't fund that from our budget, we must ask ourselves, what other sources can we go to? Possibly the massive universities that have large parcels of land here tax-free and have billion, multi-billion-dollar endowments. Possibly people from the county that are in RTP that are taking up land, again, tax-free, incentivized, mostly out-of-state corporations. How can we roll that money from the county that should be coming in? Wrangle that back into our budget so we have affordable housing, so we can pay our workers appropriately. I understand that there's a division between city and county, and I understand that that may not necessarily be within your jurisdiction, but I urge you to seek out other forms of revenue that put pressure on the massive corporations driving up the price of housing here.
Thank you.
Good afternoon to everyone. My name is James Chavis. I come to you talking about the budget for twenty-four until twenty-five. The mayor, city council members, y'all do not believe that they are not helping to push inside promotion with the citizens that's working here in Durham. Your thing is letting the outsiders come here in Durham and take over the jobs and give them higher wages than the people that's already here. That's a shame. Maybe you know and maybe you don't, but what I want you to do is go do me a kind favor and check to see if I'm lying, because if I'm lying, I want you to come to me and tell me to my face. Don't tell me behind my back. For example, Wade, he came here in twenty-two, making, okay, a hundred and forty-seven thousand and two thousand and twenty-two. Ask how much he makes now. They will not let you know, okay? It's supposed to be public record. That's in two thousand and twenty-two, okay? Then come his assistants, but we don't know whether he is a, she's an assistant, Mary. Mary came in here as an assistant to the director. Sorry, a new person from outside again, not a Durham resident, not a city employee, but an outside employee, making top wages, more than others. Her wages, okay? In twenty-twenty-two, seventy-two thousand dollars. Ask her how much she makes now. This is what...
Thank you very much, Mr. Chavis.
We are facing.
Thank you.
Okay?
Do you want to let them know that all salaries are public? Any information needs provided. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Williams, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, and manager Paige. My name is Sarita Hill, and I serve as the Executive Director of Step Up Durham. Since opening our doors in twenty-fifteen, we have served over a thousand individuals with close to half identifying as justice-involved. In twenty-twenty-two, Step Up Durham served as the administrator for the city's Guaranteed Income Pilot. We provided a hundred and nine formerly incarcerated individuals with six hundred dollars per month for one year. I am here to endorse additional funding earmarked to support the next iteration of guaranteed income and share that Step Up Durham is open to partnering with the city on this program when we hear more specifics about the administrator's role and the operational support that will be provided. One of every four adults in North Carolina has a criminal record. As you know, with a record comes collateral consequences, limiting individuals from accessing basic needs like housing, food security, and employment. The average annual income for the one hundred and nine served in the Guaranteed Income Pilot was eight thousand dollars for women and eighteen thousand dollars for men. With the extra seventy-two hundred dollars no strings attached support, pilot participants were able to invest in their own business and in continuing education, providing opportunities to contribute to and share in Durham's economic prosperity. The state recidivism rate is forty to forty-nine percent. That means up to half of forty, of formerly incarcerated individuals returned to incarceration within the first three years of coming home. For our one hundred and nine pilot participants, the recidivism rate was one-point-eight percent. When individuals have access to the resources they need, they make different choices, which makes communities safer. When we launched our pilot, we were one of two cities in the country serving formerly incarcerated individuals. Since the launch, I have spoken with cities across the country who see the value in the work we are able to accomplish. Our support to help our neighbors achieve stability will further all the goals we are striving towards as a city. Thank you for allowing me to share my thoughts in support of additional funding for guaranteed income. We look forward to hearing specific next steps directly from the city and exploring a continued partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Step Up.
Mayor Williams, members of the council, my name is Ali Corasani, and I'm here to read three postcards out of seventy-five that, uh, from Durham residents that couldn't be here tonight but wrote to the council in support of the guaranteed income program. They are all in support of adding two hundred thousand dollars to the guaranteed income program, GI program. The two hundred thousand will cover Step Up's operating costs and allow them to increase the number of participants by forty percent. One person wrote, "I was once incarcerated, and I joined the Step Up launch. It changed things for me. I got my first car and apartment with their help. I was able to pay for a person that expunged my records. Now I'm in school and have a better job. I feel better about life, and my son is happy and thriving." Another person wrote, "My brother is formerly incarcerated and exploited by his employer. My mom and I carry the financial burden to keep him housed. All of us are affected and unable to achieve financial security. My opportunities are affected. I urge you to vote for an expanded GI program. My family would be able to survive." Another person wrote, "A few years ago, I had a meal at a loved one's apartment and learned he loved astronomy and chess. He's finally gotten a small, now discontinued, housing grant. In the few years before getting housing, I'd picked them up from the Durham County Jail, Orange County Jail, and three area hospitals no less than ten times. He's always ended up in those places after sleeping or being drunk in public, never for one single other criminal offense. Please increase GI's budget to one-point-two million dollars so that more of our loved ones have more opportunity to access the safety and sleep that everyone in this city deserves." Along with these three postcards, I read it from people who wrote, who wrote to you, I urge you to add two hundred thousand dollars to the guaranteed income program so that the currently budgeted, budgeted one million dollars can go, can all go towards the direct cash payments to justice-involved participants. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Next, I have Katerina Heitman, Michael Owens, Christopher Powell, Cedric Craig, and Allison Simpson. Welcome.
Good evening, council members. My name is Katalina Heitman. I am a proud Derrmite, an immigrant, and the proud sister of a formerly incarcerated man. That is why I'm also here today to read two of the seventy-five postcards in support of increasing the funding for the Guaranteed Income Program by two hundred thousand in this year's budget. One person wrote, "I have a brother locked up for a crime he did not commit. There's nothing we can do, but guaranteed income will make it a bit easier for him to survive when he gets out. He went to Morehouse. Wrong place, wrong time. Nonetheless, he deserves the chance." Another person wrote, "I have thoroughly reviewed the request from Durham for all. As I know, there are many things to consider in this upcoming budget. I stand in support of the guaranteed income one-point-two million ask. I trust Step Up and the work they are capable of. This aid can financially support individuals in the few extra dollars needed for groceries and that little extra needed for rent and utilities. While persons might be going through some life transition, they need this. Furthermore, during my time as a recipient of the Step Up program, this could have been a great aid. Please take the time to read the rest of the seventy-five postcards that Durham residents took the time to write to you. I will be passing them to the city clerk. All of us, along with the five-hundred-and-ninety-nine people who have signed our petition, are hoping you add two hundred thousand to the Guaranteed Income Program so that Step Up's operating costs are covered, and the current one million can actually all go towards direct cash payments to a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty potential participants. Thank you."
Thank you so much. Next, I have Michael Owens. Welcome.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for allotting me time to speak. It's an honor and a privilege. I know deep in my heart that guaranteed income is a lifeline, offering hope and dignity to people in our communities. It is more than just financial support. It is a chance for struggling formerly incarcerated people to breathe easier, to dream again, and to rebuild their lives with the security we all deserve. I am the founder of an organization called Clothes for Those, dedicated to providing clothes to the homeless, churches, and those in need. I encountered a homeless man on the roadside. His story profound as an ocean and intricate as a grand architecture. Released from jail, he came back to a life void of everything. He had nothing but himself. Compounding his pain, his beloved wife was in a serious car accident, needing extensive medical attention, which could have been funded by GI. In his pain, he remained composed, dreaming of a broader future. His, his unwavering faith kept him steady. He wanted his story to be told, but he couldn't fill all that on a cardboard sign. His story hit home for me, too. For I've had family face medical challenges. Now I stand here blessed with empathy. I'm compelled to push for change, driven by that shared longing for security. Just as a sunflower turns its face to the sun, so should we turn our face to formerly incarcerated people. Just as God gives us second chances, let's extend that grace to others. This organization stands for everyone, from the incarcerated to the perfect man. But who among us is truly perfect? None. That's why in lifting each other, we find redemption and humanity within ourselves. I urge your esteemed council to continue to take action. Please increase the GI program funds by two hundred thousand dollars this year for Step Up's operations, allowing the current one million to directly support justice-involved individuals. Thank you.
Next, I have Christopher Powell.
Good evening, members of the council and Mayor Williams. My name is Christopher. I was a formerly incarcerated individual who served forty years for the crime of murder. I'm here tonight in support of adding the two hundred thousand dollars to Step Up's operation costs because it'd help us in order to get better houses for individuals coming out, better training, and even better jobs for the poor, because them is the main issues that face everybody that's formerly incarcerated. And due to my present condition, if I would have had access to guaranteed income, I would have been able to help my sister at times when emergencies arose, my mom when emergencies arose, but as of now, I'm working two jobs, and it's getting hard, but I'm struggling. I'm still here to make it. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mayor Williams and council members. I'm here tonight. Oh, sorry, my name's Cedric. I'm an organizer with Durham for All. I'm here tonight on behalf of hundreds of Durham residents and Durham for All members who strongly support Step Up's endorsement for additional funding for the Guaranteed Income Program. In the past three months, six hundred people have signed our petition, ordered postcards of support, and over seventy people have participated in our campaign events. This is a collective call to action for the council, coming from a diverse community of Durhamites that are either directly or indirectly impacted by incarceration, as you heard tonight and back on May twentieth. The call for an extra two thousand dollars was originally derived from three considerations. First, through discussions with Step Up about their programmatic financial needs and their desire to serve more folks in the Guaranteed Income Program if the city contract with them again. Second, as a result of input with a hundred of Durham residents that support the city's initiative and want to see the current one million dollars be applied exclusively to direct cash payments, would result in more participants in the program itself. And lastly, with a consideration of all the budgetary constraints and competing priorities that the council is facing in this year's budget. We applaud the council for matching the privately raised one million dollars that was allocated in the first year and with an equal one million dollars in public funds being secured for the second year. We know that you share our commitment to shared economic prosperity in Durham and our desire to see the program grow in size and eventually scope. Given the variety of economic challenges that returning residents are facing due to systemic barriers to accessing basic needs and definitely trying to make and meet in an increasingly more expensive city, this council has an opportunity to help dozens of additional justice-involved folks as they strive to rebuild their lives. For all these reasons, we urge you to increase the program's funding in order to cover the operating costs of the administering organization and for the current one million dollars to all go to the direct cash payments of program participants. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name's Allison Simpson. I'm here to thank you and express appreciation for passing the Vision Zero Resolution. You have no idea how much this means to me as my husband Matt was killed riding his bike while we were riding home with our children from the Museum of Life and Science. And thank you so much for including fair free transit, funding for the Transportation Department's full slate of requests, including the guest road trail crossing where my husband was killed, and expediting project delivery to make our streets safe and accessible for everyone in the proposed budget. Now, I urge you to please approve these proposed budget items as they are some of the steps we need to get us to zero deaths and serious injuries from traffic violence. Traffic violence is an urgent public safety issue. It not only impacted my family, but we have had three hit-and-run killings of people in our community walking or biking in just the last month, four since the beginning of two thousand twenty-four. Jerry Evans Armstrong, Timothy Wright, Philip Farrington, and Frederick Powell. This is not okay. My heart breaks for their families and loved ones, and I will continue to advocate to make our streets safer for everyone. We owe it to them, anyone who has lost someone, who has been impacted by traffic violence into our entire community. I want Matt and my children to grow up feeling safe walking and biking. I also ask that the budget support housing and education and ensures that all of those who work for our city can actually live in the city. Thank you so much.
All right, next I have Jason Davis, Sarah DiMato, Shanice Hamilton, Chris Benjamin, and Rob Wilkerson.
Good evening, Manager Page, Mayor Williams, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, Councilmember Freeman, Caballero, Rist, Baker, and Cook. My name is Jason Davis, President of the Professional Firefighters of Durham, and I represent two hundred and sixty-two professional firefighters in Durham. I stand here before you tonight in support of the proposed pay increases for the firefighters. There have been countless emails, calls, text messages, and meetings over the last eighteen to twenty months. We hope that through this process, you have found that our local does its homework. As Mayor Pro Tem Middleton stated a few meetings ago, we did do a pay study ourselves, and we brought those numbers to you and sent those to you in emails, and they all aligned with what was brought to you in the study. We were even able to get you the Charlotte numbers that the study wasn't able to produce. With that being said, we want to make sure that we are part of the implementation process because nobody is going to take care of us like us. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. Sarah DiMato, Project Director of Legal Aid's Eviction Diversion Program. I want to thank you all for including us in your budget and ask again that you continue to fund us. We've heard a discussion about gun violence, and I want to reference a two thousand twenty-one study out of Rutgers that examined gun violence and eviction. And one study from two thousand twenty found that the risk of violent crime spiked immediately after an eviction. Another study found that communities that had strong social support, including for housing and security, did not necessarily have a higher risk, although those communities experienced strain. Today, in District Court and Small Claims Court in Durham, there were eighty cases for eviction on today. In cases where legal aid was involved, there were no judgments entered. That means the people that were here today, represented by us, got to stay in their houses for at least another ten days, at least another month. There are still two hundred other cases on the docket for this week alone in Durham. If they do not have representation, those people are going to be at risk of being padlocked in two weeks. And if we tie that back to that study that shows that the risk of violent crime spikes after that, we're looking at here in the summer, families in the streets not having access to their community schools, to their healthcare programs, all of these things which we know also decrease the risk of violent crime. Communities that have lower evictions are more stable. Communities that are stable have lower violent crime. I also want to say that there are some things that are out of the control of many tenants. I just learned today that there's sophisticated software that from some office outside is totally influencing rents, and they don't know what's going on in our community. So I just ask that you continue to fund our program. Thank you.
How are you doing? My name is Shanice Hamilton, and not going to take up a lot of your time. We know why we're here. We've been here time and time again asking for our city workers, which are majority of Black and Brown people in this community, to receive a livable wage of at least twenty-five dollars an hour. And I say at least because we run the numbers, and we know with the high cost of inflation and barely being able to get approved for apartments or housing, let alone actually being able to afford the rent, that our city workers actually deserve way more. Twenty-five is like the bare minimum. And in the current budget proposal, we didn't even get that. It went from the current rate of eighteen dollars and forty-six cents an hour to the proposed rate of nineteen fifty-eight, and that's like a dollar and twelve difference an hour. And our people are worth so much more than that. Our most essential workers, that make up around forty-two percent of the city workforce, are still not receiving the wages that they need to be able to fully live and enjoy the city that they're giving their all to. It's been said time and time again that Durham is dope, and Durham is dope. Durham is like crazy dope. They did. Durham has done an amazing job, like raising me, and I'm grateful that I get to raise my son here in Durham now. But it's because of the people in the city that come together, that take care of each other, and have become chosen family for each other and stand in for each other that makes this city so dope. The soul of the people is what makes the city so dope and how we show up for one another. So we're going to continue to come together and fight for what we deserve. And while we're still going to fight for living wages for our city workers, we're also demanding that our solid waste workers are reclassified or upgraded to maintenance specialist seniors. And this conversation around the budget needs to continue, and it's far from over. We're hosting a community forum this Saturday and grateful to have some of you from council that are going to be there with community to have this conversation with us. And we need to talk about the budget, the resources, and so much more and keep this conversation going. Thank you very much.
How are you doing? Chris Benjamin. I want to thank everybody on the panel, all in here. Nine months ago, seems like a long time, but it really hasn't been a long time, not for the solid waste workers. All we wanted to be was respected, accepted, and recognized. That's all. And we wanted a few dollars. That's all we wanted. And that being said, ninety-five percent of our CDL drivers, we wanted our title to be changed because we drive multiple trucks on any given day. However, it hasn't took place. So we're, you know, maintenance eighties. We want to be seniors or heavy equipment operators, so that's what we wanted. So we're still in the fight for that. Coming from a place of gratitude, think back, in nine months, nothing hasn't changed. We still pick up everybody. We still service everybody. You guys haven't been complaining. Your trash is getting picked up daily. Even when we was out for six days, we had two weeks of trash out there. We got it up in three days. You tell me, I tell you. Ain't nothing stopped. We still rolling. And that being said, in the last, there's twelve months in a year. Everybody get recognized. We haven't been recognized, none. You got Black History Month, you got Pride Month, you got just that and a third. We still haven't got one day just to get recognized as sanitation workers or police officers or firefighters. So where's that respect at? We don't even get that respect. So I just want us to, you know, be mindful when you see us. That's it. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Robert Wilkerson. First off, we recognize and appreciate that there's a significant amount of money on the table for raises this year, around twenty-eight million dollars. However, the majority of the money continues to go to police and the management, not the city's lowest-wage workers and hardest workers. We have met with you all a few times over the past couple of months and have discussed our concerns and see little movement in our direction. The universal living wage ordinance is structured in a problematic formula, as I discussed that at the last hearing. We look forward to working with you all to improve that in the coming year. A minimum wage of nineteen dollars and fifty-eight cents does not make ends meet in Durham with the cost of housing and the cost of food. You can't raise a family on that. Even single adults struggle getting back with their pay. However, the one thing we still hope you will find the courage to change in this year's budget is to make solid waste workers whole. They are the department that took a major stand last September to show us all how serious these pay and equity issues are. The right thing to do is properly classify solid waste workers. Solid Waste is the only department where workers with the Class A CDL and other endorsements with the skills to drive several pieces of heavy machinery and who act like crew chiefs reporting and documenting their work are not paid as maintenance specialist seniors. As a result, Solid Waste continues to be the lowest-paid department with less pathways for career development than other departments. It's time for the city to fix this. Reclassify solid waste employees. We look forward to working with you on these important issues. Secondly, Mayor, speaking on your crime problem, these people that's here today for the G.I. Funds, I believe in that program. As a formerly incarcerated individual that spent fifteen years.
Thank you.
It's worth it.
Thank you. Next, I have Mary Rose Fontana, Gregory Williams, Meredith Carter, Nathan Lee, Stella Adams.
Hello, my name is Mary Rose Fontana. Thank you, Mayor Williams and City Council, for allowing me to speak today. I'm here thanking the city manager and council for including these three requests and the proposed budget, maintaining fair free transit, funding the Transportation Department's full slate of requests, and expediting project delivery. In combination with the proposed bond referendum, these budget items will help Durham achieve the goals outlined in the Vision Zero Resolution to reduce transportation-related deaths and serious injuries by fifty percent by two thousand thirty-five and by a hundred percent by two thousand forty-five. I urge you to approve the budget with the aforementioned proposed items. Thank you so much for listening to the needs of your citizens and prioritizing our safety.
Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you all for having me. I'm Gregory Williams, the advocacy campaign organizer here at Bike Durham. I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and esteemed council members. You've done some great work, but tonight I'd like to mention Frederick Howell, Timothy Wayne Wright, and Philip Farrington. These are the names of the three Durham residents who lost their lives in hit-and-run incidents in the past month. So far, this council has proven to be invested in our Vision Zero ideals, and this is reflected in the budget and with the hiring of Lauren Grove, the sidewalks and streets referendum bond. However, we urge you to keep proving, or excuse me, keep pushing, approve these budget items, and continue your hard work to expedite infrastructure project delivery. We are on the right track, but every delay can prove to be deadly. I know you all recognize and honor this because it shows in the work you do, so thank you for that. And thank you to your commitment to fair free transit and its appearance in the budget. We really appreciate that. And lastly, we'd like to support Guaranteed Income Fund's increase of two hundred thousand dollars to cover Step Up's operating costs and to support our city staff and educator pay. Thank you.
Council members, Mayor Williams, and Manager Page. My name is Meredith Carter, and I'm a firefighter here with the city of Durham. I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of local six-six-eight professional firefighters of Durham, representing two hundred and sixty-two of your professional firefighters. I am now in my sixth year of service, and I am compensated at a rate of sixteen dollars and fifty-nine cents per hour, almost two dollars below the current Durham minimum livable wage of eighteen dollars and forty-six cents per hour. Thankfully, this should be the last time, you have to hear me say that, because in July, if the compensation plan is approved as it has been presented by Manager Page, I, along with many of my fellow firefighters, will be receiving a long-awaited substantial raise. We want to thank you for all the time and resources that have gone into the compensation and class study, and we look forward to the implementation in July. We are hopeful the increase to our pay slows attrition and helps us capture top talent in our recruiting efforts moving forward. One monumental improvement of the new pay plan is that the number of firefighters earning below the Durham livable wage on an hourly basis will drop drastically. Today, we have over one hundred firefighters, myself included, earning below the Durham livable wage on an hourly basis. But after July, that number will drop to just thirty-one firefighters. We want to see that number go to zero, and you will continue to hear from us on this topic, but it is an incredible improvement. It has been very heartening to see our pay be a top priority of our city's leadership this year, and we want to thank you so much for all of the time that each of you have taken to meet with us and listen to our reps this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. My name is Nathan Lee. I wanted to just say thank you for investing in the, or modifying our Vision Zero Resolution to have an actual date attached to it so that we can hopefully apply for federal funding and have an actual Vision Zero policy and saying, instead of just something that says, "It would be nice if people stopped dying on our roads." I want to thank you for maintaining fair free transit for another year, and thank you for funding the Transportation Department's full slate of CIP requests and ask that you continue to try to expedite project delivery. We have a number of projects that have been in planning and design phases for five to twenty years, and still no shovels have touched the earth. And I want to, my phone died. Thank you.
As Ms. Adams is coming up, Seth Hurley. As Ms. Adams is coming up, Seth Hurley, John Talmadge, Alexis Crelo, Wilma Oliver, and David Bradway.
Stella Adams, Durham resident, and yes, I support the tax increase that will fund this budget. First, I want to say that I support the city manager's budget, but it's a yes and. The increase, my son-in-law lives in a city that is the same size as Durham with a similar cost of living and similar wages, and he makes almost twice what the city firefighters make. This increase, there should be no city employee making below the minimum city wage. That doesn't make sense. It's not a minimum wage if there are 31 firefighters who are below it after the compensation plan, and there are numerous other city employees who are under it. I did, I looked at the city's job openings. There were 105 openings, and 75 of those 105 were below 60% of median. The firefighter starting job was at 48% of the median income. It is imperative that we not only talk about increasing the wages, but we also have to increase affordable housing. We have to increase funding to fight evictions. We have to make sure that Durham is a livable city, safe with Vision Zero, free buses so that people can get to good jobs. But the city has to start with its own employees. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, City Councilmembers. My name is Seth Hurley, and I'm here today as a representative of the Triangle Chapter of the Democratic Socialists of America. Last fiscal year, the city of Durham spent an estimated $78 million on policing.
Seth, let me stop you right there. We, we have closed captioning that are physically typed.
Just a second. Last fiscal year, the city of Durham spent an estimated $78 million on policing. In the upcoming fiscal year, Ms. Page is proposing a $4 million increase to this mail. Jose Adan Cruz Ocampo, Levante Biggs, Frank Clark, Kenneth Lee Bailey Jr., Andre Lovato Hutchinson. All five of these men were murdered by the Durham Police Department. All five of these men were BIPOC members of the community. Not one had a gun or any other form of weapon which they had shown the intent of using against the police or any other member of the community. Many, but not all of these men, were experiencing mental health crises when they were shot and killed by DPD officers. The people of Durham cannot and will not forget the permanent damage the police have caused our communities. On the other hand, the continued increase in funding for the police and lust for shots butters shows us, the people of Durham, that Ms. Page and Mayor Williams, you both seem to have forgotten. Would the proposed $4 million increase in the police budget have saved the life of Jose Adan Cruz Ocampo, who spoke very little English and was shot while surrendering his pocket knife to the police? What about Kenneth Lee Bailey Jr., who was shot while trying to run from the police who were sent to arrest him because he violated a curfew? Ms. Page's budget suggests a measly $1 million increase to the Community Safety Department's budget, which manages important resources like the HEART program and crisis call diversion. Would this have been enough to save the lives of Levante Biggs, Frank Clark, and Andre Lovato Hutchinson, all of whom were experiencing mental health crises when they were murdered by DPD officers? Is an extra $1 million enough to help all those in Durham still affected by suicide, homelessness, intimate partner violence, and drug abuse? The answer to all these questions is resounding no. So why are the police getting $82 million next year when the Community Safety Department gets only seven and a half? Thank you for your time.
Welcome, Mr. Talmadge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Madam Manager. I'm John Talmadge, Durham resident and Executive Director of Bike Durham. Traffic deaths are one of the public health crises that face our community, and we are so appreciative that this council, this manager, this staff understands that and takes it seriously, as is evident in this budget and in last year's budget. With the Vision Zero Resolution, the funding for the capital projects and the traffic calming projects, the sidewalk and streets bond referendum, those are clear indications that you take this seriously. And the other thing that I am encouraged by is the conversation, the acknowledgement that this is not spend the money this year and move on to other issues, that this is year in and year out, infrastructure investments that need to be made until we have safe streets for everybody. I also appreciate the inclusion of fair free transit and the effort to continue to make, keep that fair, that the fair is affordable for everybody, even if that means free into the future. I urge you to approve this budget and the CIP, and to work with staff to continuously improve the city's processes for project delivery, to expedite them so that we can get to Vision Zero by that 2045 date that you've set. Thank you.
Good evening. Can everybody see me? So my name is Wilma Oliver. I have the privilege of wearing that flag on my uniform every day that I come to work. But I'm not speaking as an employee tonight. I'm speaking as a citizen of Durham. I'm heartbroken when I hear disparaging remarks about our Durham Police Department because these Durham Police Department folks, they show up, they're very kind. They are experiencing unbelievable things in this city. We sometimes have people that are squatters, sometimes people that are going through mental health crises. But also, the city of Durham has a policy, see something, say something. We don't sweep stuff under the rug. And then I think about our firefighters, who put their life on the line every single day. A dear friend of mine was diagnosed with a cancer that firefighters are at a higher risk of getting, even though they have that PPE equipment, they are at a higher risk of getting it. But I'm also speaking on behalf of my coworkers, who I consider second responders. We are the code enforcement officers that are going out there and looking at properties after there's a fire, and also meeting with the people who are living in substandard housing to try to work with the landlord and say, hey, fix this so they can actually have plumbing, have heat during the winter. And so understand that when you have an employee that loves what they do, like I do and so many of my coworkers, we are very valuable to this community. And so what everyone's saying is, I know this is tough, guys. You guys have heard some excellent programs to invest in, but who do you want answering that call for help?
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. I'm Alexis Greco. I live downtown on Mangum Street, and I want the streets of Durham to be safe for everyone. If you have ever relied on a bike or your feet or the bus to get to work or school, you understand what it's like to be really scared when you're crossing the street and people are driving 55, 60 miles an hour. It's unacceptable that people are dying on their way to enjoy time with their families, on their way to do their jobs. And I appreciate the work you all are doing to invest in ways to stop that. So thank you for taking this issue seriously, and I hope to see you continue doing that in the future. Thank you.
Hello, I'm David Bradway. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and City Council for giving us the opportunity to speak. I thank you for addressing in the budget some of the highest needs that were identified in the satisfaction survey and in the listening sessions around the budget. I'm grateful that the budget and your actions over the last year have prioritized safe streets, safe transit, and safe transportation. To achieve a fully safe, connected network, I hope that you all continue to build better working relationships with Duke University and Medical Center, with NC DOT, and with North Carolina Railroads, because even if we get to zero deaths and injuries on the city-controlled streets, that isn't going to get us all the way there. And for us to be able to use these other methods of getting around, we need connections inside, outside of campus, across the freeways, across the railroads. And I also agree with Mayor Williams and a lot of what's heard tonight, that more needs to be done on gun violence and a lot of the other issues that were raised tonight. And I'm hopeful that the parks bond, the increase in pay, and, you know, future city budgets can better incorporate some of those needs that we heard about. And I just want to thank you for all of the work that you do on council. Most of the meetings I listen to on YouTube at 1.25x speed, so hearing you live and in person is a nice calm way to do it. So I think I've got the last word here, so thank you for this budget process.
Thank you. All right, those are all of the cards that I have. Still making good time. All right, we are, those are all the cards I have. So at this time, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed and back before the council. And let me get my agenda back up here. Okay, gotcha. All right, so this concludes our public hearing on the budget. And at this time, colleagues, I will entertain, I'll start the motion if there's any discussion. Well, not really discussion, this was a hearing, but I'll go ahead and entertain a motion. No, there's no motion. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Some of the things going on in my head right now. All right, so I believe that is it. I owe Councilmember Caballero something. Did they sign up? No. All right, so I believe that's everything, right? I'm hesitant on ending the meeting because I feel like I'm missing something, but I believe that's it. All right, colleagues, that is everything. I am so confused. All right, I can't believe that this is, it's like it's too real to be true. We are going to adjourn at 8:41 PM. I'm shook. I'm like, is this real?